Called to order Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, Goochlin County Board of Supervisors meeting. The Board of Supervisors via electronic means, in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, will motion to convene and close meeting for the purpose of discussing recruitment for the position of county administrator, and the certification will follow. So Board may have a motion to go into closed session, please.
Madam Chair, I move we go into closed session as you indicated.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Podeski, roll call, vote.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Spooner.
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes.
Ms. Lachale.
Yes. All right. The Board will now convene in closed session for the purposes we've stated. Called back to order the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors meeting April 7th, and I will entertain a motion for certification of the closed meeting.
Madam Chair, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, Paragraph D, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors certify as appropriate that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening our closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board in the closed meeting.
All right. Thank you.
A second.
I have a second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Podeski, roll call, please.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Spooner.
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Lachale.
Yes. Okay, so we will adjourn until 5:00 PM.
Not adjourn, just take a break.
Recession.
Recession.
Recession, okay. Recession until 5 o'clock PM. Thank you.
Dear Lord God, we invite you here today. We thank you that you have appointed us to serve the people of Goochlin County, God. I pray for wisdom for this Board and for all of our leaders, both at every locality level, every state level, and national and world level. I pray for protection for all of those that are serving on the front lines to meet these unprecedented needs. And, Lord, I pray for healing for the sick and protection for those that we would not catch this, Lord, but we know that you are in control, and we thank you for that. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner. Pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor Peterson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Mr. Spooner, and thank you, Mr. Peterson. The next order of business is request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes to order of presentation. Are there any, Board? Okay, hearing none. Next item of business is the Chair's comments, and I would like to say that we are here operating under the governor's orders, under health providers' advice. We have our masks that we wear in public, using our hand sanitizer, staying six feet apart, as they say in Florida, one alligator apart, and trying to do everything we can for social distancing. So Goochlin County, like the rest of the nation and the world, is facing unprecedented times, and reports are that we are not out of the woods yet. But we are a community before this began, and we're still a great community. Acts of kindness and resiliency abound. Citizens taking foods to first responders and convenience center workers, donations made to nonprofits like Goochlin Cares, students, teachers, and parents learning a new paradigm with online learning. And we're even learning a new skill, how to make face masks. Examples of kindness and caring are everywhere we go. We're blessed to have the most dedicated staff and first responders working exhaustively to maintain services for you, the citizens. They are working through their own challenges and continue to work every day to serve you to the best of their ability. We give our heartfelt thanks to the sacrifices they are making. I am confident that we will go and get through this together. I encourage you to continue to follow the advice of our healthcare and government professionals. Please continue to care for one another and seek help when needed. We are Goochlin Strong. Thank you, my comments. Next item is the county administrator comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a few items. You did a wonderful job giving the summary on the COVID update here this evening. I just want to echo some of those comments, but first, just thank our residents. Their patience and understanding in this very difficult time have been greatly appreciated. You know, we're working hard on their behalf while the doors may not be open. We've been doing our very best to keep our convenience centers opening at full capacity. We've realigned some staff to allow that to continue to occur while other jurisdictions have tapered some of that back. We continue to process and do building inspections. I'm proud of our team. They've actually, they start even earlier. They've been doing seven days a week and continue to meet the public demands for services requests. And so, again, it's just really gratifying to live in a community, to see folks also, not just with their patience or their government, but stepping up and supporting residents who are in need during this time, and to see everybody supporting Goochlin Cares, our social services, our faith community stepping up, and folks working in different ways. It's a real proud moment while we still are in the midst of a crisis for this Commonwealth and nation. Couple things I did want to share, though. As of tonight's meeting, we are at 22 cases in Goochlin County. That number has grown. Part of what's impacting Goochlin County's numbers, and it's been reported widely in the newspaper, that there has been a number of cases identified in the correctional facilities, and that those individuals that reside within those correctional facilities that have tested positive for COVID-19 count in Goochlin's numbers. The staff, per se, do not necessarily if they don't reside in Goochlin County. All that being said, our recoveries continue to go up. We have about five recoveries right now.
Excellent.
And so that's very positive news. We'll continue to monitor these numbers. We're going to get, obviously, there's very sensitive health and data that we can't always share publicly, but our providers, the first responders are made aware of some of this types of information so they can respond appropriately to calls. The recoveries are not tracked as well as you would think they would be, but the cases are being monitored, so the recovery number is as much an estimate as were based on cases that they have tracked and are turned in, but you may not always get the recovery number as accurate as you would prefer. And so I think we'll still see this going up. There's a lot of discussion in the community about this model saying it's going to peak here versus that model peaking there. You know, we're going to continue to respond to the best of our ability to keep our residents safe, our employees safe, and follow the guidance of the CDC and the Health Department, but thank everybody's patience. On an unfortunate piece of news, we were notified yesterday that the West Creek Emergency Center was going to be closing as of Wednesday, so tomorrow, and our understanding is that that is a temporary closure to realign staff to help with the overall COVID-19 response. Certainly, we're proud to have HCA in that center here and look forward to their return upon the health crisis dying down and things somewhat normalizing. So for our residents, just want to make sure that folks know that that is not a center that they can go to as of business tomorrow, but there are other regional outpatient emergency centers in the more western Henrico area and amongst the area. We'll continue to make sure that this is a vital service for our residents. Shifting gears just a little bit, with everything else going on with COVID-19, some of the important work of the census is also still going on. Some of the notices that came out with the census may have given the appearance that you needed to respond by April 1. April 1 was a target. It's a census day. Just so folks know that if you got it in the mailbox and you have an opportunity to respond either on your phone or online, you could still do that all the way up through August 14th. And so there are months that you can still participate, still respond to the census. What happens is, if we get through April and into May here, if people haven't taken the opportunity to respond either online or at the phone number that's provided or sending in a paper questionnaire, that's when they release the individuals that are the census takers, if you will. They'll come knocking on the doors of those who didn't respond in the other ways possible, and that will really start in earnest come May through August. So that is a process done every 10 years. It's a valuable resource to us to make sure everyone's counted in our processes. It impacts voting in districts and the makeup of our county, funding of our county. Encourages everyone to participate that can, and I wanted to share with you, though, as of today, Goochlin's self-response rate was 51.6%. So over half of the residents that could have responded have done so already. Or, I'm sorry, that's the state rate. Goochlin's actually at 53.5%.
Of course.
As usual, our residents are engaged in leading the way, but still important to get as many folks counted in this as possible. So if you haven't had the opportunity to participate in the census yet, would encourage you to do so, but if you have any questions, please call the county's main number at 556-5800. That will give an opportunity that if you have more questions here locally, we can get you to the right individuals to help answer any questions you may have regarding the census. Madam Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
That's quite a bit, Mr. Podeski. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next order of business is the citizen comment period, and today we're trying something new, obviously, because of the orders that we're under. And so we have people who have the opportunity to dial in or to send emails, and it will give Ms. Biskaywitz an opportunity to see if we have anyone that's on the line at this point.
We do have one person that wishes to speak.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute him.
Good afternoon. This is Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manneken Road. Just Ms. Biskaywitz, I don't have a monitor, so I can't see the light flash. I'll do the best I can, but I do want to, Chair, I did try to log on to the website to watch it live stream, and out here on 621, that's not working. So this is all audio for me, but I very much appreciate the efforts the county has gone to, to allow citizens to stay engaged and in contact. You know, what y'all are doing stays important, whether or not we're sitting out there in the actual boardroom or listening on the telephone or at sometimes live streaming. I want to echo a little bit some of the comments that the Chair and Mr. Podeski have made, is that, yeah, these are interesting times, but I'm appreciative that with all that's going on, we still seem to have, not still, but we do have a system that is able to address what is going on. We have experienced some tragic loss of life, but if my calculator or math is correct, the death rate is .00003 of the national population. So any loss of life is regrettable, but I'm appreciative that not just Goochlin, but across the country, things, folks are stepping up and doing what seems to be available. If I can switch for a moment and come back to Goochlin on something a little more pedestrian, and that would be the convenience center and tire recycling. I did take some of my normal trash to the convenience center on Fairground Road, and I did notice that there is a sign on tire recycling, and it said tires larger than, and I don't want to misquote, but I think it said 15 inches. It had a $13 cost to it. And if Mr. Podeski or staff at some time can clarify whether that includes agricultural tires, I will confess, I was on a mission. I did not stop and read a chapter and verse, but, you know, one of the concerns the Farm Bureau has expressed is an ability to be good citizens and recycle farm tires when they're no longer usable, and if the county is able to provide that service, I know the ag community would be very appreciative. I'm going to assume, I'm close to three minutes, so I'm just going to let it go there. Thank you very much for what y'all are doing. I appreciate the opportunity to say somewhat engaged here, and better times are ahead of us, and we will meet again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lyle.
That's it.
Oh. That's a little delay there. So thank you, Mr. Lyle.
It's my pleasure.
I have no others, citizens.
Have no others at this point. Okay. Before we close the citizen comment period, I would like to mention that we are leaving the citizen comment period open.
You might want to remind the listeners about *9 on their cell phone in case they miss it on the agenda to call in.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. You can join this meeting live by dialing 888-788-0099 with a meeting ID of 518-833-894, and a password of 786347, and to dial in, users may wish to speak can press *9 once they're in the system. We're also keeping this citizen, no, not citizen comments, the public comment, right? Okay, never mind. Okay, so we have no others, Ms. Biskaywitz, and we'll close the citizen comment period. Next item of business is the minutes approval for our regular meeting on February 4th, budget meeting on February 18th, and a budget session on February 18th, and a budget session on February 25th, for three sets of meeting minutes. I'm assuming everyone has read them. I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for the meetings on February 4th, February 18th, and February 25th of 2020.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I have a second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. So I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, so this is a, this does not require a roll call. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? No? Okay, motion passes. All right. The next item of business is reports. Today, we do not have a typical session where we have presenters giving us the reports, so therefore, there's really nothing to be done on this. However, I would like to make a couple of comments regarding the fire rescue report that I thought were significant. One is that our Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management is working with so many different agencies, including county departments, the Sheriff's Office, public schools, Goochlin Public Schools, Virginia Department of Health, Social Services, Goochlin Cares, Animal Protection, Goochlin Pet Lovers, the YMCA, Powhatan Goochlin Community Services Board, Senior Connections, and our Agricultural Extension Office, to just show you how widespread and comprehensive the effort is here. The second item I'd like to point out is that our emergency medical dispatch system that we put in place a year or so ago is really coming in handy now. So when they get calls, they're able to screen folks so we can tell our providers, our first responders, what is going on when they get there. So that's really important. On another note, the statewide burn ban is in effect. It went into effect at 4:00 PM on February the 15th. So no burning before 4:00 PM, and that goes until April 30th. And the last thing I'd like to point out from Chief Ferguson's report is response times continue to trend down by almost two minutes since October 1st, and that's a result of staffing. So I think all those are significant points. If there are any other comments about the reports in the Board packet? Okay, so hearing none. We'll move on. Next agenda item is the consent agenda. Mr. Podeski.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There are four items for the Board's consideration on the consent agenda. I'm going to take a little bit of opportunity to go through the first two in particular, and glad to answer any questions you may have. Ms. McGee's also been integral with all of these. And so first, as the Board will recall, at your last, I believe it was your last meeting, you had authorized for the county administrator to take certain actions pursuant to upcoming public hearings. And so some of these actions I want to go through with you here this evening that have been undertaken, and so tonight, you're requested to ratify and extend temporary actions recently taken by myself, serving in the capacity as the Director of Emergency Management. The first one, this coming weekend, or I'm sorry, this past weekend, we were to have a rabies clinic. Because those are adopted by ordinance, we had to cancel that to avoid the large groups. Also, we suspended shut-offs for our county utility customers, so our residents would have access to water and sewer services even if they're unable to pay their bills in full during this time. We've waived adoption fees for the animal shelter, and in fact, that has actually resulted in some clearing of the shelter over the past week, and so real pleased with our residents' engagement in the adoption process. We also suspended enforcement of temporary sign restrictions. We recognize our businesses right now are hit very hard, and this is just an olive branch that we are able to extend to allow them to do whatever necessary signage that they need to do in the short run to make sure our residents know that they're open and serving the public, and certainly don't want, we're not looking to penalize anybody for trying to keep their business open during this time right now. And the last one is, the Board may be aware, if you are an ambulance service that is not permitted currently by Goochlin County, you actually have to go through a process with the fire chief and you actually get added to have, to be able to run ambulance services in Goochlin County. Basically, right now, we're trying to actually encourage private providers and other ambulance services to come into the county to reduce the burden on the public services to transport COVID patients and other patients, for that matter, and so also extending the ability to waive those permits right now. And so the motion is to, under consent, is to ask the Board to ratify item number one as it relates to the rabies clinic, and to ratify and extend the remaining items in that particular until the end of the declared state of emergency for our locality. The second one is actually a new item, but we wanted to, as we've been looking at ways that we can help our business community and our residents that are struggling through this time, was where could we impact potential things that if they're having a hardship, meaning any kind of taxing deadline, what could we possibly do for them? And typically, our tax bills are due June 5th, and if you don't meet that deadline, you would incur penalty and interest. What the second item on your consent actually is doing is authorizing us to extend that for an additional 30-day period before anyone would get hit with penalties and interest, and authorize a public hearing for the Board on May 5th to re-adopt this action that we're taking here today. The question may become, why are we doing this now and not announcing it then? As you know, if all the stars align and we're in a position to adopt a budget on April 21, typically, the commissioner starts generating bills and those kinds of processes. It's important for them to know what kinds of things and things that we would forego as they're in that process and generating kinds of bills and those kinds of things. So that's why we wanted to bring it to you now rather than later. And the third item on your consent agenda is actually adoption of the pandemic virus policy that we reviewed at your prior meeting, and the last item is a proclamation recognizing national crime victims' right week of April 19th through 25th. I and staff are standing ready to answer any additional questions the Board may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Podeski. Board, any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, maybe, might be a little easier to break these down, so I'm just going to try this. I'll make a motion for the first item, that the Board, that the Board of Supervisors ratify number one regarding the cancellation of the rabies clinic, and ratify and extend number two, three, four, and five until the end of the state of emergency. That was part one, so I move that we ratify and extend as stated, but I do have a question if that gets a second.
Let's get a second, then. You have a second on this?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. So we have motion and a second, so Mr. Lumpkin.
Quickly, the suspending shut-offs for any county utility customer, that's good, and obviously, it's intended if they're unable to pay their bills in full. When we lift the state of emergency, that goes away, but I just want to have some comfort that there's already a process in place to work with folks, because if people are unable to pay the bill now, I hope sooner than later, we'll be able to lift a local emergency when the situation that got us here is tapering down to a point where we're comfortable doing so. Is there a policy in place or a protocol in place to help these people navigate through? Because, I mean, we don't want to lift the state of emergency and boom, we're running around shutting utilities off.
Mr. Lumpkin, thank you. That's a good question, because whether we're in the state of crisis or if one of our residents is in a position during a typical month that they run into some level of hardship, there is an opportunity for them to reach out to the public utilities department and work through a process. We're committed to trying to make sure we're working with our residents when we can, and try not to shut off anyone if we understand their reasoning and can work with them to work through that temporary piece. And so we would do the same as this process gets kicked back on. We get out of the emergency, you know, within the next 30, 60 days, whatever it may be. If someone's still in a hardship right then and there, the penalty and interest, if there's a challenge for them, their bill will still be due, but if they're running into a challenge or an issue, they can reach out to us, and we do our best to try to work with the individual customer.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, this is only with respect to item number one on the consent agenda, not the entire, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. There are no further comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? No? Motion passes. Okay, now.
Madam Chair, on the second, on the second, on the emergency ordinance, I move that we adopt the emergency ordinance to delay penalty and interest for 30 days on real estate and personal property taxes, which are currently due June 5th, as presented, but I also have a question on this one.
Mr. Lumpkin, the second action there is also to adopt, to set a public hearing for May 5th.
Oh, thank you.
If you would.
Thank you. I saw that earlier today. Yes, I would like to make my motion clear that adopt the ordinance, but under state law, we need to re-adopt it to maintain it effective through July 5th, so ask that we also, the Board also set a public hearing on May 5th to consider re-adoption of this emergency ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Lumpkin, you had a question?
Yes.
Time's up.
So, wanted to be clear, provide additional 30 days. No, I'm glad, I reread it. I understand now, when I read it earlier today, I think I understand based on your explanation and looking at it more closely. So I'm good. Thank you.
Yep. Madam Chair, I've got a question. Mr. Podeski, I've caught you short-staffed, too. You don't have Barbara Horlacher here or the Treasurer here, so I'm going to ask this anyway, and hopefully, we'll see where it goes. The question has to do with revenue recognition. The bills are due on the 5th. If we delay that till July 5th, that bridges our fiscal year. Could you let us know how that's going to be handled in terms of revenue recognition?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And it's a good, it's a good and fair question, and was one of the ones that the Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, the Assessor, myself, Barbara, Ms. McGee, we're all involved in. And some of, the question is, is our fiscal year basically ends June 30th? How does receiving revenue after June 30th? How does receiving revenue after June 30th be accrued back to the fiscal year that we're in? And based on, and we certainly have been in touch with our auditors and those kinds of things, we can accrue revenue back to fiscal year '20 up through the middle of August, and that, that was targeted revenue for this particular fiscal year. And so when we were looking at the dates for extension, you know, we looked at a number of different options, but we didn't want to go too far, that would, if for some reason we didn't hit the collections, or we ran in, you know, any kinds of issues, it was going to put us too, too close to that period where, once the funds were received, they would have to be booked to fiscal year '21. And so that's how we ended up backing into the 30-day period. And from an audit perspective, th, those funds can be tied to '20.
That can be, and it's more or less like a post-closing adjustment, if you're, I mean, it's, if, in other words, this July 5th, I mean, five days earlier, it'd be June 30th, you, you know, if we did it then, and the payment, the check was written and the payment came in July 1st, we might do a post-closing adjustment and say, this was for that tax year, it was, it was sent in for that tax year, and, and so it gets attributed. I just want to make sure that we don't inadvertently blow a hole in our 2020 budget.
No, we, we double-checked that in our process.
Run solid, solid ground there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that, appreciate that. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Really good question. Any other questions, Mr. Sharp?
I just question, is there any notification to the county, just so we have an idea? I mean, people say, you know, I'm, I'm in a position, I need to delay it, so that we can have an idea of what impact will that have on us immediately on our, on our revenues?
Ms. Sharp, it's a fair question. I'm not sure we will actually know until the date of, the due date, unless someone intentionally reaches out to us and lets us know. And that, that's a phenomenon that even in a, you know, a non-crisis situation, that we really don't know until June 5th what the numbers will reconcile. We do projections and all those kinds of things, but unless someone reaches out to us, and folks do that today, they can reach out to the treasurer and say, look, I know I got a tax bill due to you June 5th, I'm, I'm facing a hardship, what can I do to, and the treasurer does work with them to do payment plans, or whatever makes it manageable on the individuals, this just pushes that back 30 days.
Right.
And so it does add an extra 30-day window for us from a planning perspective, if you will, and reconciliation perspective, but we do recognize that, you know, we have folks that may have already been out of work 30 days, at least another 30 days is, is somewhat of an olive branch that we, we thought we could extend.
I'm just looking from the standpoint of having some, some handle of what we may be seeing in delayed revenue to our budget.
And, and it's a fair question. One of the things, we look at it a couple different ways, and this one's specific to real estate and personal property. And so as we look at it, we look at traditional collections, we actually, we look back at the impacts back to the last recession, and so we, we tried to, and you'll see in Ms. Horlacher's presentations here a little bit earlier, we did account for, well, a little bit later, we did account for some lack of collections due to this crisis, whether it's, it doesn't mean the bill goes away, it just means that people are unable to pay, and so we had to count for a much lower collection rate than we would have historically, and so we did account for some of that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The only other piece to mention that was on the call that I participated in with Mr. Bodeski is, a very high percentage of our real estate taxes are being paid by mortgage companies who have escrowed that through the, through the year payments. So it, it's perhaps not as big a hit that it might be, given that, and Mr. Bodeski, you may remember the percentage better than I do, but it's certainly upwards of 80% of the real estate taxes are paid by mortgage companies, according to the treasurer.
That is accurate. The unknown is, is who was able to make their last three payments, and, and there's 20% of our residents that may be just paying cash. And so we, we, we did put in some factors for that. The, the challenge is, is this is so unlike the last recession, where some people still worked in the last recession, they may not have been at the same market rates and those kinds of things, we, this one is so completely different. And, you know, so we're doing our best financial prognic, prognic guessing, is what it is. We're doing our best estimates that we can, and I think we've accounted for it to the best of our ability, but you're going to see in Ms. Horlacher's presentation that we're, we're actually going to be doing 30-day, every 30-day reconciliations to the best of our ability as we move forward. And so as funds start to come in, even though they're due June 5th, some people come the first day that you can pay your taxes, some people line up, some people wait till the last day they can pay their taxes. And, and then certainly, there is, as Ms. McGee said, some, some factor for the mortgage companies, and so as we track that as it comes in, we'll have to re, relook at all of our forecasting.
Mr. Spoonham?
Yeah, Mr. Bodeski, thanks for this, just from a point of clarification, this doesn't mean that the taxes aren't due when they're due, it's just that we're not going to impose the penalty. So my question becomes, are there any other downstream, so somebody still may show as delinquent, I just want to make sure there's no other downstream, such as reporting to credit bureaus, or stopping folks from doing things, any negative impacts to them beyond just the collection of taxes?
That's a good question, and, and the answer to that is simply no. The treasurer enacts all of those actions on our behalf, and she's going to forego all of that in this process. She's, while she has a role under state code to adhere to, she's very sympathetic to residents' concerns right now, and, and does not plan to take any kind of collection processes, definitely in the near term, and, and is open to residents reaching out to her and, and working with her to the best of their abilities.
All right, thank you, good question. Anything else? No? Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second on item two of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Looks like we're taking these one at a time. Anyone want to give a stab at two and or, I mean, three and or four?
Yeah, number three, adoption of county pandemic virus policy. I move that the board adopt the pandemic virus policy as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins, Mr. Sharp, thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Page 80, just page 88 of it, one, it goes through responsibilities, and it ticks, ticks off, you know, county administration, department of general services, fire rescue, HR. It gets down to section G on page 88, emergency management shall, and then it says, consult with Goochlin Health Department, et cetera, and then some bullet points. I pulled out my org chart, and, and I missed this when we reviewed it last time, but what is emergency management? What, who is that? What is that?
That is fundamentally, well, and it's a good question, because you've seen that I serve as the, I'll make sure I'm giving you the right term here. Ms. McGee, I'm the, I'm considered the?
The Director of Emergency, Director of Emergency Management is the title that you co-host with county administrator.
Yeah, and, and under this, I, I serve that capacity, but I can also do it through my, in, in most cases, much of this is done through my designation of the fire chief on our behalf, and so they're doing much of this. That being said, it's, it's done in consultation between me and the departments impacted.
Okay, so, so, I mean, that means you're, you're activate the EOC as needed, and that's under your purview?
Yes, sir.
And, and so, emergency management is basically, it's not a department, but it's, it's you?
I wear a hat, but it's, it's, it's extended to many individuals in our organization. And so under, under the state code, while I wear that hat, Ms. McGee can help clarify, I do have the ability just to make sure that those functionalities get carried out, and often, that's done by more than just myself.
Okay. All right, you've got a lot of responsibilities in that bullet list there.
If you don't mind, just to follow up on that, we do have definitions in this document. We might want to include a definition of emergency management, just so that it's very clear to anyone looking at it, because that is a big responsibility, so be sure it's totally clear, just a suggestion. Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I guess when the year began, I wasn't sure we'd be sitting here considering a pandemic virus policy, and I don't know if this, this replaces our existing policy, but there's been an awful lot of work done on this by HR and, and the county staff in general, and I just wanted to thank them during this time of crisis to step up and develop a policy like this. It's very extensive and very lengthy. We may not get it 100% right the first time through, but this is an excellent start, and I just want to thank all the work that went into it, so thank you.
Thank you, that's a really good point. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, motion passes. All right, last consented item. Do you have a motion? Someone?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the item four on the consent agenda, proclamation recognizing National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th to 25th.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is new business, the first item there is presentation on capital projects update. Is that Mr. Stamey?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Derek Stamey, Deputy County Administrator for Operations, and it's my pleasure to present to you our capital projects report and update for fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2020, and my hope is ultimately to give you some good news to counterbalance all of this negativity that we're having to deal with in our daily lives. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the report. General Services this year has coordinated over 25 capital projects, both large and small, across the county and across functionalities. Our support efforts have included the development and assistance with countywide planning, whether it's with the 25-year public facilities master plan, our capital improvement plan, as well as our countywide space study. This following report includes a recap of our projects completed, as well as a status update of some of our projects that are in process. Before diving into the projects themselves, I wanted to take an opportunity to notate the fact that these projects take a team of people within the county, as well as some of our, our contracted staff, to complete. County Administration, General Services, our Finance and Procurement Office, our Community Development Department with all the building officials, our stormwater review personnel, as well as the County Attorney's Office, all play a key role in bringing these projects from a planning standpoint to a completion standpoint. And that process is extremely important, and it's, and it can be a lengthy one, as the photo to the right clearly illustrates the animal shelter. It's, it's taken quite a while to get there, but I've got some good news on that project as we move forward. I'm going to roll through this presentation by complex, location, and functionality. So beginning here at the administration complex, I, I don't notate all of our HVAC replacements because there are numerous, but I did want to highlight the one on the roof of this building. It, it had been here since we opened the building back in 2005, so it was slated for a 15-year cycle replacement. That was completed on a weekend earlier this year, when we had some warm weather with a crane out to the side, so that it didn't interfere with any of our operations at that time. In addition, here at the administration complex, we have been actively working on the registrar renovation, which is the cottage behind our building here, so that our registrar could vacate their current space here along 522 and be relocated to the, to the space located behind the administration building. They're going to move from approximately 680 square feet to a new facility that will meet their long-term 15- to 20-year needs, which will be approximately 1,750 square feet. As they wrap up completion in June on that project and we begin to move them, we are hoping to start construction and award, or, or, I'm sorry, award a contract for the renovations here along the 522 wing to address our commissioner of revenue space, as well as our treasurer space. That work will, will coincide with the move of the registrar to that new space, beginning in July of 2020, with an anticipated completion of December 2020. You can see the photographs at the bottom. That building is still a good ways away from seeing a whole lot of progress, but the photo to the left, you can see where we essentially had to gut that building to a shell and begin rebuilding the interior structure to meet the, the long-term needs of our registrar. Jumping down to the courthouse complex, a mile down the road, as we, as we move through this presentation, I'm going to try to illustrate how we go from a conceptual and design phase through construction to completion, and, and it begins here with the courthouse complex security building. That building was completed and began being occupied by the sheriff's office to screen folks as they moved into the circuit court there. You can see the conceptual drawing up to the left, a construct, general construction about halfway through, about 50% completion at the bottom, and then moving to the right, how that building looks today. You can see it, it essentially mirrors what our, what our design firm came up with several months prior. Moving down the sidewalk from that building, across the street, you could see the Goochlin County Business Center, and it's been called the old bank, it's been called the old library, it's housed school facilities at one time, but you may recall, we began renovating that 2,388-square-foot structure about four months ago, five months ago, and construction has been, and renovation has been completed, and it currently houses our Chamber of Commerce, as well as our economic development team, and there was a myriad of issues that we had to address within that building. And I, I showed you that, that artist rendering from our, our, our design firm for the courthouse security building. I kind of included some, some conceptual drawings that, from, from our own staff internally that, that led to our signage on the front of that building. I thought it was kind of cool, it turned out almost exactly as what you see there in front of you. Some progression photos of construction, this is actually a set of progression and completion photos from the front lobby as you enter the building from Route 6, if you start in the top left-hand corner. Again, we brought this building, much like we're doing with the extension office, we're bringing it down to a shell, and we began renovating and, and placing metal studs within the building. The second photo shows as we move through drywall and a significant amount of trim work and interior window work, some drop ceiling, and then the bottom left is our completion photo of that project. The next slide actually illustrates the same project from an alternative angle, not going to go through that again, but that is entering from the rear portion of the building. And then our last slide for this renovation, you can see that the building, entering from the front to the rear is a pretty sizable conference room. It was actually two classrooms that were subdivided just to the right of the window. We went in, gutted that portion of the building, and came back and, and really did a nice job of renovating that space. Now we have about a 15-person conference room that can be used as part of that economic development and business center infrastructure. Across the street from that building, and, and this is tough to see, I think, in, in a couple weeks, when we really get farther down the road on these renovations, we're not quite there yet, that building across the street, which we call the Jenkins, Jenkins Building here, has housed many different county functions over the years, but it, it most recently housed our Tucker Todd's program. Once that was relocated to Central, and as part of our space study, we, we decided to move forward with the project here to create a historical center, which the Historical Society will move into once this space is, is completed and, and they're able to, to round up the troops to move down the road. And if you can see with the picture on the right, I tried to illustrate the progression of the main room. This building is essentially a 2,100-square-foot shell with two interior walls, which provided all of your support. We pulled the wall to the left, if you're facing the building, to the left out, and opened up that entire space, inserted a, a steel beam, I-beam in the middle, and was able to re-drywall and re-carpet and really make a really nice building for our historical center, once it's completed and they're able to move in.
Timing, timing on that?
That project should be completed probably within the next 10 days in totality, with the exception of the signage on the exterior of the building. We're waiting on some of the exterior amenities to be, to be completed before we finish our sign package design on that, and then we'll work and, and coordinate with the Historical Society on their move, moving forward. Central High School, you may recall that we did open the blacksmith center and the, the hands-on Dogtown Artisan Center, that's, that's phase one of that project. We also completed, it, it seems like such a long time ago, but it really wasn't, it was, it was December that where we completed the county's agricultural center on that 6,800-square-foot portion of the building, as you're facing it to the right, adjacent to our current Cultural Arts Center. I included some progression photos on that. The photos on the left are, are what you see on the right, just updated from 2012 to today. You can see what kind of state that building was in, and that was actually one of the better areas of the building, lockers, outdated paint, it, it was rough. And actually, those pictures were taken in, in January of 2012, and this is how it looks today, and that, that, that's the lobby of our ag center, and the bottom photo is from the lobby looking to the parking lot to the side of the building. You can see it's come it's come a long way. Some good news on the Goochlin Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. We are expecting full completion within 60 days. I can't tell you how excited I am for this to be coming to a conclusion. I can barely contain my excitement. John and Lisa have to listen to me and get my texts every day as I celebrate, as we get closer to the end of this. Animal Protection will be beginning their transition in May to that structure, once final completion is met. And we'll be looking to have a grand opening slated sometime for June of 2020. In addition to that, there's some one-off projects related to the animal shelter, included the dog park that's slated for completion at Hidden Rock. If you go out the main entrance to the animal shelter, make a left, go about a half a mile on the right where the old abandoned soccer fields are, there will be a dog park that's slated to be constructed there. And also, our staff has been working through the winter on some winter projects. And we've actually worked with our Goochlin Rotary Club to create a trail that would connect Hidden Rock Park across the landfill and through the back of the animal shelter, leading you up to the actual animal shelter itself, including a boardwalk. So it's pretty exciting for this to be coming to conclusion. I've included some photos there. That's the entrance to the animal shelter, a portion of the lobby, and the boardwalk itself. Some additional photos there. That's the newly paved parking lot. I wish I had updated this sooner. We have white lines on that parking lot now, so it looks even more complete. It's very exciting. The photo to the upper right is actually in our spay and neuter clinic. That's the pass-through window where the staff there can actually work and be able to handle animals in a more perfected environment. And then, in the picture below that, is actually the rear of the building in between where we will have the adoption center. And to the left of that are intake and holding area. Some additional progression photos for the animal shelter. You can see, to the left, that was probably, I would say, sometime, as we move through the fall, you can see where they started to put in the curb and gutter and begin more of the site work there. And that's closer to completion. Looks even better today. Each day it gets better. Some interior photos to the left, that's the same room, just a different perspective. That's as they were installing the epoxy flooring, which is critical to the functionality of the building. And the photo to the right is the installation of all of the individual cages that are needed once that adoption center is operational. Ceiling tiles should be in within the next week or two, and it will continue to evolve from there. An update on park projects. Leaks Mill Park, we did complete some trail upgrades with our volunteer group, including improved access to the mill. We have new signage in the park, courtesy of the Friends of Goochlin Parks. Now folks have a clear map that allows them to go from the trailheads to all the different amenities that can be found there. If you haven't been down there, it's very popular, especially now, when folks are looking for things to do while maintaining six feet of distances, to get out on our trails and access that mill and experience some history. Tucker Park, we did complete the county's first dog park. We are working through the unsolicited proposal phase of the pedestrian crossing. And we are actively working with volunteers on our archery and disc golf park. The photo to the upper right includes our picnic shelter, which was constructed and completed in the fall of 2019, getting a lot of use, hopefully not today, but previous to that it was. We did work with GYAA on the installation. I brought to you last year a report that we were building two new covered batting cages. We've actually added a third. And before all of this pandemic hit, we were well on our way to adding a fourth, but that will be put on hold for a later date. But again, Hidden Rock Park continues through our local partnerships with the Rotary and through GYAA to really be a shining example of how folks can work together to provide some solid amenities for our citizens collectively. Some other countywide projects of note, the Louisville Parking Ride. The design between Dominion and VDOT is probably going on its seventh revision right now. I'm still pushing that project along and hoping to complete it late spring, early summer of 2020. Gateway Sign Program, that photo to the right, yes, that is the Welcome to Henrico sign, that we placed a mock-up of the Welcome to Goochlin sign over, just to get an idea of the scale associated with our signage. We didn't do it under the cover of darkness. It's there in the middle of the day. I didn't receive any calls on it, so I think things went well. You can see, we did receive some quotes on that that were due this Friday, and we'll be reviewing those quotes and making sure that that's how we want to move forward with our signage. Again, this one will be placed in the median of Route 6 as you cross from Henrico into Goochlin. We are not able to tackle the Broad Street sign yet, due to its location being within the limits of disturbance of construction there at that 288 interchange. And lastly, I wanted to finish up with the private street sign project that we began about 12 months ago. Right now, we're hovering at about 65% of those signs being switched out countywide. And we're going to continue to work on that project in the coming months to get that completed. And with that, I'll take questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stamey, any questions on the board?
Madam Chair, just to comment, as we're going through this, I know this is the capital improvements project, but just thank you to you and your teams for everything you guys are doing, from working to keep the parks open, the convenience centers. And I love what Parks and Rec is doing, with social media to give families ideas and things. So just thank you, and I think as citizens, for making sure that they're doing the right things and helping us do that. But I know your staff is taking on a lot, so I just thank you for that.
Absolutely. I'll make sure I share that with them. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Stamey. Really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the next item, new business, is adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 year-end projections, amendments to fiscal year '21 CIP, and amendments to the 2021 budget. Ms. Klaecker. Give us a minute while we're rotating staff in and out here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am going to talk to you first about our FY 2020 year-end projections. So lots of change. I would never have pictured myself here saying all these things just three weeks ago. So what are we going to do? How are we going to approach it? I think the first thing we did was we started talking, how is this going to affect our revenues? So we have what we call a revenue committee here, which is made up of myself, the treasurer's office, the commissioner's office, the assessor, and of course, Mr. Verdeski. And so we have talked, met twice, to discuss what we feel will be the impact on the FY 20 end of the year. We're going to keep, I'm going to keep coming to you each month, and we're going to update things, because right now, we don't really know a lot of answers. So we'll just keep updating things as we get more information, get closer to the end of the year. We have a meeting of the Finance and Audit Committee next month, as well as August and November. And we can have those more frequently if we need. And that will give us an opportunity to do a deeper dive on some of the concerns and questions in those meetings. But the first thing we did is we started with what we felt were the most conservative assumptions for revenues. And I'll call that their base case, because we wanted to know, well, exactly what do we think how bad it could get? And honestly, we don't really probably know, but we try to be, again, very conservative in that. And then, we thought, as results do come in, if they're different, better, hopefully. And then we can adjust from there. So in looking at revenues, first of all, I have lots of numbers tonight. I usually don't go into as much detail, but I had a feeling that perhaps you all would want to hear the detail tonight. So as I said, we created a base case scenario. And we started with looking at our largest numbers, our largest sources of revenues first. And I heard your discussion about due dates, so I just want to address that first. So what we did, what you did tonight, the action that you approved, that means that interest and penalties will not start accruing on any amounts that are owed after June 5th until July 5th. Normally, that would start the day after. That's just the way the law is written. We start the day after. This will not, it doesn't change our due date. Anybody who wants to and able to is more than welcome to pay by June 5th, but they won't, if they pay on July 5th or July 4th, they will have no penalty or interest. And so our due date hasn't changed. And our due date being June 5th, what we have always done is, and it's called the modified cash accrual basis, we have 45 days. So whoever has paid their June taxes by August 15th, we count that in FY 20. So even if the majority of the folks wait until July 5th, we can still count anything that we collect up until August 15th for the FY 20 year. So we won't skip a whole collection, which I think was my concern as well, that we really couldn't handle missing a whole collection. So that is how we've addressed that. The first revenue that we looked at, of course, was our real estate tax. And we won't know the full effect, because we have changed that penalty and interest date until July 5th. So we can assume that collections will still be going on pretty rapidly until July 5th. We do know the values of properties already. That's been done. That was set as of January 1st. So the only other factor that we could sort of play with or make assumptions about was lowered collection assumptions. Normally, the treasurer collects close to 94%, 95% by the due date, and then subsequently collects almost all of it. In this case, we lowered that to 90%, just as a number to pick, to say maybe only 90%, we'll only have 90% collection rate on real estate. And so the number we came up with is, our forecast is $26.4 million. The budget was $26.5. In FY 19, we collected $26.5. So we still think, you know, we're really, and we've already collected for this year so far, $13.4. So we still think that's a pretty safe, conservative assumption, that we'll collect another $13 million in the June-July timeframe. Personal property is kind of a similar story. The full effect won't be known until July 5th, because, again, we extended the period for penalty and interest. But we know the values in the sense, because those are set by the NADA, and we just put our cars in, and they come back and spit out the value. And that's basically the value as of January 1st, if you owned that property January 1st. And our values have actually increased a little bit over last year. So again, we know the values. We just lowered the collection assumptions a little bit. We forecast for FY 20 $11.3 million. Our budget was 11. And FY 19, we actually collected $11.4 million. And to date, we have already collected $7.5 million. So again, we feel that's a pretty conservative assumption, that we will be able to meet that. And once you get after, those are two, by and far, by far, our largest revenues. When you go down to sales tax, now you're talking $3 million. FY 19, we got $3.320. Budget is $3.3. Our forecast is $3.1. And again, there's a lag in this, so you don't really know, because when you get, when you receive sales tax money from the state, it's actually for sales of two months previous. So figuring that February was probably an okay month, we still haven't even seen that, because we won't get that money until this month. We'll probably start to see the hit in March. But again, we've already collected for seven months, $2.3 million. That means we only have another .8 million to collect for the rest of the year for five months. So again, we think that's a pretty conservative, safe assumption. Building permits, we have collected so far 882,000. And for that, and for a lot of the revenues that were even smaller, I just left the assumption be that we wouldn't collect any more money at all, which is, again, very conservative. So interest on bank deposits, we know interest rates have gone down. We have collected so far 700,000 for eight months, which was an average of about 88,000 a month. Taking that down also, we made that projection 800,000, which would be only another 100,000 for the last four months. With PPTRA, that's the amount we get back from the state for personal property relief. I've assumed we received the full amount. Same as constitutional officers, the same, we've not heard anything from the state yet, but we're still expecting to be reimbursed at our normal rates. And again, like I said, in all the other revenues, I've almost, unless I knew for certain what they were, I pretty much kept them at their current collection. Didn't assume any more collection. So just to give you the big picture of all the revenues, the budget was 57.1, almost 57.2 million. Our forecast has now been lowered to 55.9, almost 56. And this is including social services, because that is how we show it in the CAFER. So I have included that here. So that would give us a below budget of about 1.1, 1.2 million. So that's only one side of it. What are you going to do when you say your revenues are going to be lowered 1.1 or 1.2 million? So on the expenditure side, we don't want to show an operating deficit. As somebody said on one of my webinars, millions of webinars I've been listening to, that for local governments, local governments in Virginia especially, this happened at, you know, the worst time. We're three-quarters through the year, fiscal year. So how do you make adjustments in the last quarter to fix everything? And you're also just about to adopt your budgets, which now look like fairy tales compared to the way they looked three or four weeks ago. So how do we quick scramble to try to work with our expenditures? All departments, with the exception of Public Safety and General Services, have to turn back a minimum of 5% of their operating budgets. We've already told them that. We've already told, and truth is, they normally turn back more than that, as a whole. But also, Public Safety normally turns back a large part of that. We don't expect Public Safety to turn back much this year. So we told them to hold all nonessential spending. Now's not the time. No travel, of course, without the county administrator's approval. There was no travel anyway, because of all the mandates. Freeze all non-public safety, nonessential vacancies. We've also asked the schools to turn back $150,000 of the funds that we give them. So in other words, to have a surplus of $150,000. Now, we've already discussed this with them. And we've also told them that anything that they turn back in excess of 150, we would then give to them the following year, like we normally do. But that first 150 stays with us. And then, but if they turn back 300, then the extra 150, then we can do as a turn-back amount and appropriate in next year's budget. So they understand, and we've met with them to discuss that. And all in all, that shows you on that sheet, the third-quarter projection, basically, that would give us about a break-even result. So at that point, we would not have an operating loss. Again, that's assuming base case, assuming that people don't turn in more than we have projected, and that we don't earn more revenue than we projected. That doesn't mean that our fund balance as a whole won't go down, because we've already spent some money on the CIP this year. So our total fund balance would go down. Of course, we would, we're going to talk a lot more at Finance and Audit Committee next month about how fund balance will end up for the year. But I think the key point we're trying to prevent at this point is an operating deficit. We want to show people, we've reacted, we've tightened our belts, you know, our budget, we don't want to spend more than we bring in for this year. And just as, well, just to tell you, like I said, I'll be coming back every month. Next month, we'll discuss more the impacts on the fund balance, and we'll make further adjustments as needed. And then I just want to talk about the CIP for a second, and then I'll take questions. So what about the CIP? We've got a lot of capital spending going on. We've got a lot of capital spending going on out there. How is that going to, how are we going to deal with that? We have five projects that we have not begun at all. We have cash sitting in the CIP for those projects. Those are the fuel management system, the document management system, voice-over-internet, sports field relocation. That's $449,000 that's sitting in the CIP fund assigned to those projects, but we have not started those projects, and we will not start those projects. With the potential that if at the end of the year, we don't really like the way the general fund is looking in terms of fund balance, we can move those funds back to the general fund, if that would give us a little more cushion in the general fund in terms of our fund balance. There is a project, it is for Station 2 land acquisition, not District 2. This is Station 2. This is to build a replacement for the volunteer station that is there. We haven't been able to acquire land or find any suitable land. We are asking to use those funds, that's 350,000 that is sitting there already in the CIP fund, to finish the treasurer commissioner renovation, this wing of the building, to put $25,000 to the Tucker Park pedestrian bridge, and also to add $25,000 to the facilities improvement. Facilities has had to do some things during this pandemic that we weren't expecting. It hasn't been a lot, but it's been several small projects. Add the drop boxes, there was something else they had to, there were different little things like that that they've had to do. So this will help them with those, finish up some of those projects that have made the working conditions work. And ongoing projects can continue. We have designated or thought at this point that we would review all the purchase orders that are issued. The county administrator would approve those, and those expenditures that didn't need purchase orders, I would have to approve before they could go on. And that's just a little bit more oversight, just to make sure we're not doing things that we don't really need to do at this point, other than the continuation of projects that have already started. So I need to take a breath. So it's, you're all turned to talk. Any questions on that part of the presentation?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horlacher, and thank you again to you and everyone that's worked on this. I know it's been not pleasant, probably, at this point. So, board, questions? Mr. Lumpkins?
I'll start, on the schools' turn back. Where'd you, well, where'd you come up with the 150? Or give me a point of reference. Haven't they been turning back? They, what are they projecting now, I guess? What are they expecting in terms of turn back if nothing had changed?
I don't know that I can put an exact number on that. They are watching their expenses very carefully, obviously. Last year, they turned back, I think it was almost 350,000, so.
And we, we.
And then we turned around and gave that back to them, yes.
Right. It seems like, I was, I was imagining that they're going to have some money like fuel. I mean, buses aren't running, so I don't know what that number is, but I was imagining that we'd see some money. So I'm just wondering, why'd you settle on the 150 and they can have the rest?
At the end of the day, that's the board's call on what they can have or what they can get back, its turn back. You can make those decisions. When we looked at the cuts that we were making in order to balance all of this, that was a number we arrived at that thought it was a fair proportion contribution back to do the balancing. But certainly, it's the board's prerogative to set that number higher, different. This was one way we chose to balance it, but it's certainly the board's prerogative on whether they even get that turn back at the end of the day. That's been our practice, but that's certainly the board's call.
Sure. Okay. Well, thank you. I think it might make me feel a little bit better if we knew what, we don't need to micromanage, but if they can give us an idea like, hey, with this, you know, no fuel usage and these sorts of things, hopefully some savings on buildings and whatnot, that this is a number. Because, Mr. Podolski's saying we're looking at maybe sharing kind of in a way that what we're doing on our end and kind of a proportional share. But it might be a little more accurate, and I think inappropriate, if we actually hear from them what the real impact is, not like a comparison.
Right. And I know they were, they were originally planning to come tonight, but.
Dr. Rayly's actually probably online, and he may be able to better answer your question. Trying to manage our 10 people in the room, we couldn't get everybody in. And so Dr. Rayly's online and probably be pleased to do his best to answer your question.
Well, and again, it's not a decision that we need to make tonight, but I just wanted a little more.
He's raising his hand. Are you comfortable taking a question, Madam Chairman?
Absolutely. Sure.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to, thank you for the opportunity to share. Of course, we're working through this, just like the county is at this point in time, and we've had really great conversations with Mr. Podolski, Ms. Horlacher, to get to today. And ultimately, we're looking at our revenue streams, just like the county is, and we feel that we're going to be significantly impacted by state sales tax revenue. And there may even be some state money that is going to be decreased between now and June 30th as well. So I think unfortunately for us, we have many more unknowns on the revenue side than maybe the county does at this point in time. So that's a significant challenge for us. I expect to brief the board on Tuesday after meeting on April 14th to share what the county is discussing today, as well as any sort of revenue forecast that we may have. You're right, Mr. Lumpkins, that we are not operating school buses. That's the savings for us. We are not operating our buildings with the same thermostat set points. We're saving some money there. But our greatest concern right now is the lack of sales tax revenue and how that may impact us. So we still are forecasting that, but it's hard for us to project the fund balance accurately right now. But like Barbara said, as time goes on, we learn more about some of those end-of-the-year revenues and expenditures, we'll be able to dial in more, want a more accurate fund balance projection.
Fair enough. And you still have to go to your board for the 100, to talk to them about the 150 and see if that even makes sense?
Yes, that's correct. That will be shared with them publicly on Tuesday night.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Rayly. Any other questions for Dr. Rayly while we have him on the line? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input.
My second, my second question is on Station 2 land acquisition. When I saw this in the, in the board package, my first thought was, just my reaction, I was looking to hear some of the reasoning behind the 300 to the commissioner revenue treasurer renovation. My thought was, we should just put that in suspense and not do anything. I'm fine with the 25,000 Tucker Bridge, Tucker Park Bridge and facilities improvements. But if we, if we weren't having difficulty finding land for Station 2, when was, when, what was the timeframe we were looking at the treasurer commissioner revenue renovations happening?
Madam Chairman, if I can.
Absolutely, Ms. Peterson.
Mr. Stamey did mention that we were, that project was actively out to bid, and we were going to move it forward as soon as July. So that begs the question of why didn't we freeze that project, and we're recommending you to transfer funds into that. As we're sitting here with you, we think we've created enough stopgap to manage through this fiscal year. What we didn't call out, if you remember when Barbara gave you your January projections, we were anticipating a multimillion dollar, you know, combined with expenditures, underspending and revenue increases. Typically, at the end of a fiscal year, we would come to you and say, we'd like to use some of the year-end savings and allocate it to this project or that project. Unfortunately, we're not anticipating those funds right now. And so it's been, there's been a number of things. So we, one, we do recommend that we keep the commissioner and treasurer space project still on track. That project, the funds that we have set aside for space renovations right now are not enough based on engineer's estimates that we could award a contract based on the work that was going to be there. We were anticipating year-end funds to transfer to complete that project. So that's partly why that transfer's there. So the question is, is why should we even move it forward when there's some uncertainty? And I think, for me, it's still, it's a staff safety issue of why that one should still move forward. If for nothing else, or if you're familiar with the existing commissioner revenue office, that one more so than anything. The staff interaction and the countering and management there is less than ideal today. It became even more of a challenge when we started to have to implement the social distancing kinds of things. The treasurer, while there are improvements anticipated and planned that will mirror the commissioner revenue, is a little bit less than the commissioners' issues, but they do run in tandem. And so we believe that that project still should be moved forward, but it would need additional funds allocated to actually allow it to move forward. We are sensitive to, and we understand if the board would decide otherwise, but we thought that that project, assuming that our stopgap measures on everything else worked, that that one should still move forward. The company 2 replacement, we have quite honestly struck out on three or four options to purchase so far. And while that's not going to go away as a project, we would have to look at funding it again in the future.
So what's the total cost, or what's the total planned or budgeted for the renovation?
And I kicked Mr. Stamey out of the room, but maybe between Barbara and I, we can do our best. I think that renovations between 700 and 800.
Yes.
So about half of it, you were looking to cover with the additional revenues that we were projecting?
We have about 500,000.
We have about 500 now.
Already assigned in the space renovations. That particular, we, that particular project, engineer estimates over 7, and then you add a contingency to it, and that's why we were, we were doing the transfer of the balance of that.
Okay. Well, this is good. The timing's good because we've been, we've been so nervous, or not nervous, but maybe just watching all of the CIP projects, talking about the cost of construction going up. I mean, we're in a very uncertain time, and if this goes on for another through June, and if we're into June and the status quo right now, I imagine the construction environment is going to change somewhat, too, I would have to think. So you're talking about, even if we do this, we're still not going out to bid until July?
Actually, no, sir. The bids would actually be in, and hopefully to award for, to begin in July.
So we're going out asking now?
Do you happen to know where the, I don't think that, there was an issue because we had put the bid on the street, and we couldn't hold the pre-bid because we couldn't bring people together, and so it got delayed, and so.
The pre-bid meeting is this Thursday.
And we're doing electronically?
Maybe the following Friday or something like that. And there's actually, there's actually been a lot of interest in the project.
Come closer to, come closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. Sorry. There's been a lot of interest in the project. A lot of vendors, construction have been calling and asking about the project. So there's been a lot of interest. I don't know what that means in terms of bids and prices, but.
Right, right. No, thank you. And that's all the questions I have. I'll just, I'll keep my ears open for if other board members have any concerns with that particular 300,000, but other than that, thank you for the good explanation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Spunhour.
The VOIP work, I apologize if I'm not as familiar with that. In base, usually typically, from my understanding of VOIP, allows you a lot more flexibility in being able to utilize internet as opposed to landline. With our current state of people working remotely, are we, are we potentially shooting ourselves in a foot, in our, in the foot to allow for more flexibility if we were to do this project? Or does it not seem to be of value?
From my perspective, it was a project that hadn't been started yet, and we knew that, that it wasn't going to be started this year after talking to Randy. So it wasn't necessarily a project that we wanted to cancel, just maybe it could be postponed.
But you don't, but the general consensus is that this wouldn't be something that would help in our current situation.
Go ahead.
I wouldn't say it wouldn't benefit us if we had cloud voice-over-IP versus PRI lines coming in, but at this point, we can't really say for sure one way or the other because we're in the middle of it, and that's what we have. But, yeah, the plan was in the future, it would, it would be more flexible for us to do some more telework. And the main, the main reason one for this project was to save money on the PRI lines and put our voice, voice lines going over our internet pipe, but we have to increase our internet pipe as well. So there's a, when I crunched the numbers, the first three years, there was not a saving, but going into year four and forward, there was about a $20,000 to $30,000 savings per year.
Do you know just off the top of your head what the cost of this one, this project was?
The initial cost, in addition to what we already have budgeted for PRI, was about 44, 45,000, I believe.
I think we're 29 and then 40, 49, maybe?
Yeah, in the 40s somewhere. That's in addition to what we already have budgeted for telecom PRIs, which was in the hundreds, the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year.
There were some concerns about this project that were also raised, that we haven't had a chance to scope the project. And so what, where's our redundancy concerns if internet's down on phone access and those kinds of things? And so we hadn't been able to fully scope the project and understand the risks to be able to even move it forward. And so while conceptually, what Randy's saying is, is there's some identified benefits. When we brought this up to the board once before, the board had raised some concerns that we owed you some follow-up on, and we haven't had a chance to do that work. And so that's in part why it's being delayed. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spunhour. Ms. Peterson.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Horlacher. So this is the FY '20 kind of stub period from here, from now till June 30th. And we're going to go into FY '21 in a minute.
Right.
From what I've, from what I've heard so far, if you net all this out, the expected revenue reductions for the stub period of '20, and the proactive expense management actions we're considering here, if you put all that in the mix, net it all out, as I understand it, we anticipate finishing 2020 on June 30th with a balanced budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there'd be no impact on our reserves, either assigned or unassigned, other than what we originally expected?
Correct.
So there's no unexpected drawdown in reserves?
No.
Okay.
No.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any other questions?
I just have a question. If any of the construction was delayed, do you see, with the way things are going, would there, could there potentially be savings in just delaying? You know, after the last recession, construction costs went down substantially. And I'm just wondering if there were any delay in some of the larger things, not lengthy, but, you know, whether we might be able to get more for less and put money back into the, into the budget? I don't know. I'm just, I throw that out as a.
Mr. Sherb, we certainly thought through that, and I think sometimes the best time to do construction is in a recession, so you get more competitive bids. I don't know if any of us know what that is. Is that three months from now? Is that six months from now? Is that 18 months from now? Operationally, that project has been delayed, and, well, it's finally due, and it's been long overdue. The real question is, do you want to sock the money away in a fund balance that you could touch should something else go wrong, and delay the project and refund it somehow elsewhere? If, if construction markets return in June, there's a, I'm not sure we're going to see a cost savings immediately, unless the market completely dries up. If it, if it does what it did back in '09, '10, there was, you know, at least a 36-month rebound where there was some really good pricing going on. I'm not sure I, you know, with my crystal ball right now, can give you an idea of, you know, should you, should you find a better construction market in six to 12 months? The answer may be yes. And so I think it ultimately, while we recommended to move forward, if there's a higher comfort level of delaying at the board level, that's certainly a prerogative of the board to delay that project. We just think that there have been a number of operational issues that need to be addressed there, and that the other measures we had suggested could potentially address that. address that. But if it, if the Board's more comfortable delaying, it's certainly your prerogative.
And there really are no other projects, other than that one, starting, and you'll see that more in the twenty-one budget as well. No construction projects.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horlacher. All right. So any other questions?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approved the transfer of funds in the CIP from the station to land acquisition bucket, to the three hundred thousand, to the renovations at the County Administration Building, twenty-five thousand to Tucker Park Pedestrian Bridge Project, and twenty-five thousand to facilities improvement budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any other comment or questions?
So, I'm sorry. I really haven't been paying attention. By moving this, is this saying, I guess I'm just having a hard time right now moving funds up for a project, which I know is important, but in the sense, what, what action is this going to do? It's going to move the funds? Does that mean it's quote-unquote spent?
They're not.
It's just, it's transferring the funds that are already there in the CIP from one project to another. So, yes, then there will be enough funds in that Treasurer Commissioner project to complete the project.
But alternatively, we could move those funds to the general fund.
You, you could, or you could wait and move those later if you felt that you needed them. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of different alternatives. All, all it's doing is moving funds from one bucket that's in the CIP to another project bucket.
I'd like to hear some discussion from the rest of, yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, that's it, Mr. Lumpkins.
It seems to me, what I heard from the presentation, is that there was a plan to come ask us to complete this funding for the administration out of, towards the end of the year when there were funds available in excess.
That was the original idea, yes.
So the plan was, this was, they were tracking to do the courthouse administr, I mean, the County Administration Building project, but to fund it once we were near the end of the fiscal year with enough money in it. Now, the projections are changing. There's not going to be that bucket there, so let's keep the project on track, bring this money from another project, we'll cancel that project for now, bring it in. So that, that's what's happening. I started out the conversation, I'd be a little more comfortable maybe delaying and, and seeing, I mean, we have a lot of, we've got, we've got pandemic uncertainty there, we've got a leadership change in our government, in our administration. So, you know, I thought, can, can it wait? But, I mean, we've heard reasons why, and I think we don't want it to wait. And, and it wasn't, it was going to happen anyway, it just was going to be with a different set of funds, as long as the Board, near the end of the fiscal year, approved the use of those additional funds that would, would be available, that now we're afraid won't be available, or now we're projecting won't be available.
Correct.
Is that convoluted or helpful to your concern? Because I have a similar concern, but.
Well, all perspectives is helpful, right? But if I'm looking at what we're thinking about removing from the 2021 budget, you know, when you're talking about vehicles for Sheriff and things like that, I just, I don't know if these could be, like, with this uncertainty, is this a, that we really feel good about going ahead and doing these renovations, is that really going to be the most important thing based on the uncertainty? And is, is it, so what we're hearing is weighing the current needs and the, because of the situation and the space, if it really is, I think, Mr. Bedeski's word, dangerous, then of course we need to address that because we need, that's a very important part of our government, that we need to be functioning so we can continue to function. It's just weighing that against other needs that are coming up, and that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get to in my head.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Says five projects will not be begun, will not, will not be started? The ones that have not begun yet will not be started?
Correct. The first four will not be started, that money will just stay there, the four hundred and forty-nine thousand could potentially be moved back to the general fund if we decide to.
That's in our CIP for those four projects now, and we're not moving it, and we're not moving, we're not putting in the general fund, we're not shifting to other projects, we're just leaving it in place?
For tonight, correct.
But we're not starting those projects?
Right.
Okay.
And the fifth project is the Station Two land acquisition.
So the consideration, what are the, so the dollar amounts on those other four projects is four forty-nine?
Altogether, yes. They add up to four forty-nine.
So four forty-nine, we're not doing anything with, the contemplation is the three fifty, shifting from one to the other.
Correct. Shifting it from one project to another, basically.
So we're going forward with a little less than half of those five projects that haven't been begun yet. So, I mean, to your question, should we, you know, because we're in a cash conservation and liquidity mode, and I get that, and so pulling the trigger on a project commits cash, I guess in this case, it sounds like we're going forward with less than half of the five projects left for this year and freezing or holding off on the other projects. Is that a fair characterization, Mr. Bedeski?
Yes, sir, that's the proposal.
Okay.
I have a question based on, the four forty-nine, that, that, and I'm pretty sure, I just, I'm going to go ahead and ask, and I think I know the answer, but that four forty-nine was not money that we were, that was already on the budget. That's, that's not money that we were saying will come in at the end of the year.
No. That was money that was budgeted in the CIP, yes.
What, what happens when you just pull these out? Do they just kind, do you, do you keep just track of, they're still next to these projects, we're just not doing the projects?
Correct. Correct. And so, so our commitment, we're sort of making a commitment to you all that we wouldn't, would not start those projects. We would keep that money sitting there for whatever purposes we want, potentially returning to the general fund. But just to let you all know, there is that, there are those funds there that are not being touched, basically.
Those are in assigned, assigned buckets?
Yes.
So.
They are in the CIP. They're not, they don't even affect the general fund balance at this point. So they're, they've been put, you know, ready for those projects to start in other previous budgets.
Some previous budgets. So it's an accumulation of previous set of sides that's there, ready to go. It's not part of our FY twenty operating budget. The contemplation, again, would be, you know, we can either pull the trigger on a four forty-nine and go forward or not, which it sounds like the proposal here is not. And then on the three fifty that's there, is also an assigned balance, that three fifty?
It's also already in the, it wouldn't affect the general fund at all. It's in the CIP, it's sitting there.
That the contemplation would be to go, go ahead and go forward with that. So we're, we're following through on projects we've already started that were mid-stride of the ones that have not begun yet. It looks like, again, a little less than half, we're thinking about going forward by moving to a different account and then triggering that and going forward with that. And the other four forty-nine that's.
Half in, half in dollar terms, you mean?
Right. If you have three fifty plus the four forty-nine, so it was a little, little less.
Right.
And then the other ones that have already been set aside from previous budgets, we would just leave that where it is. It would be available to unwind that assignment and put it back in the general fund next year if we decided it was a more important project. I mean, it, it's there and it's assigned to a project, but it's, it's not committed as yet, as I understand it, so it would be available for reassignment or unwinding if we needed to.
I think what you said is, you're basically, you're making a representation to us that those projects won't be started. I mean, they're still there, but you're making a representation to us that.
Exactly.
Those aren't going anywhere, so we'll know when you pull the trigger on those, and you'll bring it to our attention.
Right. We looked at the whole CIP, and it says like, where can we be conservative here? Where can we not spend funds, you know? And, and we, those four projects haven't been started, and now is not the time to get halfway down the road with them, was what we wanted to say to you.
Great. And I think, given the relative size of the magnitude of the 2021 discussion, perhaps we can focus more attention on the dollars rather than the dimes.
Okay. Simply put, I, I don't want to underestimate the, being conservative or not. So at the end of the day, you would be transferring three hundred, adding it to five hundred, so you'd be either delaying about an eight hundred thousand dollar collective project or letting it move forward. While the four forty-nine was sitting there, I've been using the term backstop, I'm not sure that's the right term, but if we didn't take enough actions on the general fund side to make sure that that didn't come short, you would have the four forty-nine to potentially, you know, reallocate towards the general fund if you needed to at some future date.
Any other questions at this point? Do we want to vote on this before we go through twenty-one?
That would be great.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Four yays, one nay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, now, fiscal year twenty-one, Ms. Horlacher.
Yes. So the, my intention here is to just briefly go over what we're going to have our public hearing about as soon as we finish this. But the idea is just to say to you that normally, at this time of the year, we come back with a few little tweaks to the proposed budget. We say, hey, we missed this, or we found this, or, you know, that's not the approach tonight. The budget we had proposed back in February has been totally changed. So the discussion is much, much different tonight. We didn't feel responsible bringing that other budget to you, knowing what we know now. So it's quite a changed budget. I will go over the highlights. Much of the detail has stayed the same as in individual lines, but we, we started with revenues again, we did a similar analysis you just heard about for the FY twenty budget projections. Some of the things that were a little different is, in FY twenty-one, you're actually impacted by two assessment years. You're actually impacted by the assessment of FY twenty and the assessment of FY twenty-one. When we did the original budget, that June fifth, the twenty-one payment, we based that on an estimate of what we thought assessments would be. Well, original assessment estimate was four percent increase, based on what's been happening over the last couple of years. We took that out, no increase in values, so we just kept values flat in order to try to project that, that June of twenty-one income or revenue. We, all in all, from our original projected budget, we decreased revenues four and a half million, and I'll go into the detail on that in a minute. So that gives us FY twenty-one revenues of fifty-five point three million, which is actually a decrease over the FY twenty budget of about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So again, I'm trying to be base case conservative, because we know it's very, as opposed to the, being three quarters through the year, we haven't even started that year. So we know if, if things come up better or go really wonky, we've got a lot more time to address them. But again, we thought we'd start with the base case, or what we feel is the base case at this point. So we have a, from, from proposed, we have a one point two million dollar decrease in real estate tax. From proposed, a one million dollar decrease in personal property, six hundred thousand dollar decrease in building permits, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in sales tax, and a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar decrease in interest. And that is from what we were originally proposing. So you end up with this slide, again, a lot of numbers, and I did rework this a little bit, apologize for sending you a second one of this. And I highlighted in yellow what, what the comparison columns refer to. But I just wanted you to see the totals and to see kind of what is, what's happening here. So we have a FY twenty budget, then we have our FY twenty forecast, and then we have our FY twenty-one proposed budget that was way back in February, a long time ago now, and then what we are suggesting as our FY twenty-one adopted budget. And you can see, dollar-wise, the change from the FY twenty budget, we were originally going to go up about five point five million dollars. Now, we're actually going to go down over the previous budget about three quarters or a little more million dollars, which is actually one and a half percent decrease in the general fund budget. And it's, it's a very conservative budget. And again, we looked at the revenues first, big changes there, how are we going to address the other side of it, which is the expenditures? The, the more painful side to, to everybody out there. So in terms of expenditures, we had to make adjustments to reduce the expenditures by four point four million from what we originally proposed back in February. So with the exception of public safety, we would reduce all the department operating budgets by five percent. So any, any budget line you previously had would be reduced by five percent. Freezing all new positions and removing associated costs. So they just, they just aren't in the budget right now. And I'll tell you how we can change that later if things come out. But all those new positions we talked about and, and promoted and proposed, those are all out, as well as the associated costs with hiring those people. Maintaining, so all the contracted support services, the different agencies that we give to maintaining those at the FY twenty level. Maintaining the school funding at the FY twenty level. This is, this is a decrease from us to them of about what we, about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars compared to what we originally proposed. So taking away the, removing the two percent merit and all benchmarking increases, so all salaries were figured at what they currently are. Reducing the contribution to the debt service reserve. One of our payments to, for the school debt has dropped off this year. So we were planning next year to put in a whole lot of money towards that debt service reserve. We know this could impact the future, and we know this could impact when the school will be built and our ability to pay for that debt. But there's also a whole lot of other unknowns out there. We don't know when it would be a good time to issue debt, things like that. So we reduced that contribution to debt service reserve from two million to point nine million. So there still is point nine million there. We also reduced our Pago contribution to the CIP from eight hundred and forty thousand of operating funds that we usually put in there. We reduced that to zero. And we did, the only thing we increased is the reserve for contingencies from two hundred to four hundred thousand. And that's just because I feel like there's going to be so much unknown that we need a little bit of latitude in there to, to allow for some increases we didn't plan on. So the amendments will, I'll show you the totals again tonight or in the next few minutes, and then budget adoption would be on April twenty-first. Now, budget supplements will be a very, very easy thing for you all to do and enact if things turn out better than we thought. So again, we're starting with base case, you know? That doesn't mean that we get to December and things are really back to normal and things are rolling along, that we can't bring to you budget supplements, that, you know, reinstate whatever it is that your priorities are, whether it be school funding, positions, merit raises, whatever, you know? So, so we have a lot more opportunities to, to change things in FY twenty-one than we did with the FY twenty projections. And what about the CIP? We had a five point eight million dollar CIP budget plan for this year, for FY twenty-one. There's approximately twenty projects. We are suggesting to amend that down to a two point six million dollar CIP, which would leave three projects and three partial projects. projects and three partial projects. And I'll talk about the projects and then, and the partial projects and why we decided that those were the ones we felt should stay in. One of the remaining projects is, that we left in is the ladder truck. The ladder truck is going to cost approximately $1.4 million. We've already discussed the need for it. And also, there's an 18-month time on getting a ladder truck constructed. So, if we were to keep it in the budget and we were to go ahead and sign a contract with them on, or about July 1st, it would still be 18 months before that thing would actually roll off the line. The Randolph Elementary Parking Project. The schools already have some funds set aside for that. We have some funds coming in, in the FY '21 budget, I believe it's about $800,000. Of that, about $200,000 is proffer money that we already have set aside. They really would like to finish that project and get it done, especially now, they can get a good start on it, nobody's there. It's, it's really, it's, it's going to make a difference to Randolph, and it's a high priority project for the schools. They really wanted to hold on to that one. And then, we still have money into facility site improvement. We always put money in each year for all those projects that come up, things that break, things that fall apart, some small AC replacements, things like that. So, those three projects, we left intact. And I should have put a total on those, but I didn't. So, it's about $1.4 million for the ladder truck, about $800 for Randolph, and $185,000 for facility site improvement. Partial projects. We left $100,000 in for IT replacement. And that is just because with all that's been going on, we've been buying laptops for people, we've been replacing laptops. We don't know, obviously, our IT infrastructure is really critical right now. We, we don't know when, we might have to replace some of that, so we left some money in there for that. We left in $50,000 for sheriff vehicle, and that will only buy one sheriff vehicle, and $50,000 in on the county side as well. Again, more or less, what if, you know, if we have a vehicle or two that we just absolutely have to replace? And so, it leaves, like I said, a CIP of about $2.6 million. $2.4 million was planned to come from reserves, and we're going to talk about that more next month, but I do believe that since we had already set aside money for the CIP, for the FY '21 CIP, those funds will still be there without impacting any of our other assigned, unassigned fund balances. And then again, as like I said, it takes about $200,000 in proffers, which we already have set aside. So, I will take questions on that. Again, tonight, I will briefly go over all this as well, and there's no action required. I just wanted to give you a preview of what we'll be showing tonight for the public hearing or in the next few minutes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Horlacker, I really appreciate it. Questions from the board?
I'll start.
Stollumpkins, you want to start off?
You know, I was listening to this and your earlier presentation, and I, I'm just, you know, I realize this is a lot of work, and so, my tendency is to dive right in and start asking questions, but I'm going to catch myself, like my colleagues are better at doing and saying, thank you. I know this is a lot of work, and I, I do, I sit here, I'm impressed, and then, but I've got all these questions piling up in my head, so I dive right in. But I, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, you have, taking my lead from Mr. Peterson, like step back a little bit, you have some room in this, it looks like to me, because the assumption that, that taxes, that the real estate values will not change, you, you kept using the word, I think, base, like base scenario or whatever.
Right, right.
But when we had the last recession, values went down, I think.
Correct.
So, do you know, or can, do you have enough numbers that we can run a rough figure of, what is a 1% increase or decrease? What is a 1% change in values of real estate? How does that impact? What's the dollar, ballpark of a dollar figure?
Oh, that is a really good question. And I know I should know that, because I actually, first I had, of course, 4%, then I had 1%, and then I took that out, too. So, I should know that. And it was not, I remember that, you know, it may, and I'm just going to say off the top of my head, I'm just guessing, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a huge swing, but I-
Barbara, do you happen to know the total dollar amount we get from real estate taxes?
Well, this year, it's $26.4 million.
Okay, what would 1% of that be?
Well, hopefully, you can tell me that faster.
I don't ask questions, I already know the answer to, right?
That's a trick question.
That would be $260,000.
You were close.
So, 1% would only be $26,000, is that right?
$260,000.
You asked here. But you see where I'm going with, I've been trying to, Barbara, trying to help you work through the numbers, 1% change in $26 million.
$260,000.
10% is $2.6 million, 1% is $260,000.
Right, right.
So, you see, follow the math?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great. So, and that's close, you said around $200,000. So, if values drop 4%, then we're in the million-dollar impact.
Right, and then-
And you have room in here, from what I'm seeing, what you're doing, you have room even to manage to do something like that, it seems to me.
We do have a little bit of room, we have that, that reserve, there's still point, almost a million dollars there, that we're still contributing point, you know, $900,000 to the reserve for the debt service reserve. So, there is that $900,000 right there. Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything else, but that, there would be that. And again, it's, it's only going to be half of that number, because it's only for that half, the one payment.
Over the year, right, right.
Of the whole year, right. So, that's sort of half of that. So, yes, there is some room in there.
Yeah, you're right. So, 1%, yeah, right, 4% drop next January would-
Would impact both.
Would only fix, would be half of the impact on this budget year, okay? Yeah, I, I mean, things are so fluid, I, I think this, it seems to me you have some room, and this, this is a result of a lot of thinking, and it seems to me, I don't see any decisions in here that jump out at me as troubling. I mean, obviously, we have to remain flexible. Last question, though, is, what is the latest that we should, that we can adopt a budget?
I think the state code says June 30th, but-
Legally, that might be the answer, but it impacts-
Practically.
Part of the reason we adopt our budgets in April is because it impacts the June billing,
Send the notices out.
So, what's the latest we can adopt the budget and get bills out?
April 21st.
April 24th is a hard stop.
Well, it's close, it's got to be in that neighborhood.
If you have any flexibility, it's with, it's weeks, if we're going to keep our, keep on track with our billing cycles.
I understand it takes more than a week to get the bills back, and so, from the-
I understand, I just think, I think a budget this month is going to, I mean, that's why you wrapped up with budget amendments and, and, you know, do it, doing, I think it was, I forget the word, but amendments and adjustments, because I can't imagine there not going to be any.
Correct.
Because there's, I mean, there always are, and we're really guessing.
There always are, and then this is really-
We're really guessing.
Right.
In a lot of things here. Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp, questions? Mr. Peterson, comments, questions?
Yes, I've got just a few, Madam Chair, thank you. I've, I've heard a couple of comments so far about the last recession, how that might be instructive for what might, we might be looking at going forward here. I'm just going to suggest or posit that not all recessions are created equal. The last recession, I believe, was centered around and triggered as a, as a real estate recession, both residential and commercial. And this one was triggered by a virus, and with any, any luck and good management, will kill this virus. But it's not necessarily a, a real estate-centric. There'll be implications, but, but I'm just going to suggest there may be some differences as well. If you could go back to page 14, I had a, about a question a page here, and we'll just kind of page through real quick. Okay, we, we talk every once in a while about a revenue-neutral tax rate, and I've saw other places where we talk about, 53 is our current tax rate, and revenue neutral would be 50. And here, we're leaving it at 53, and the first line says, we're going to have decreased taxes. So, the 53 really isn't even a revenue-neutral tax rate at this point, is that right?
Well, this is based on-
Our expectations?
Our expectations of collections, yes.
So, if we were going to try to generate the same number of real estate tax dollars, we would have to raise that rate from 53, which we're not going to do. But I mean, they, this isn't, I mean, I keep hearing about revenue neutral, we're leaving the rate alone, and we're not going to, we don't expect to collect the same amount of revenue. So, this really isn't a-
Right.
In practicality, it's not a revenue-neutral. I understand the calculation, the technology, or technical way to calculate that number, but, but I just wanted to point out that, you know, we're leaving the rate alone, but we're actually expecting a decrease in, in revenue as opposed to an increase.
Right, and that, that's mainly, like I said, because of collections, and then because of that holding the value flat next year.
Sure, okay. And if we can go to the next page? Was it this page? I guess it's the next one. Okay. Second bullet says we're going to reduce all departments by 5% except public safety. The next bullet says we're going to freeze all new positions and remove all costs, but it doesn't say except public safety.
That's correct, we took out all new positions.
Wow, okay. All right, that was the clarification I was asking for. The answer maybe wasn't the one I was hoping for, but that's something I think that we can, we can think about when it comes time to maybe do some, some amending here, because that, that troubles me a little bit, but I understand what we need to do.
Right, and I, I think so, I think that makes everybody probably uncomfortable, but I, part of my rationalization for that is, would be that I don't believe if things continue the way they are on July 1st, they're going to be in a position to, to take in and train new people, just, just the whole, you know, recruiting and, you know, interviewing and testing and all that whole environment. I think right now, they're very busy doing the jobs that they do on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, this, this can be the first priority, that, you know, you say-
Sure. I mean, it's a point well-taken that we were anticipating growth in the county, and so we're maintaining our level of service by increasing the growth in services we provide. If the growth isn't there, then you can revisit some of your growth assumptions about this as well. And with everyone staying home, there's fewer accidents to respond to, so that's, that's a good thing. Okay, if we can go to the, maybe the next one, next page? Let's see, reducing Pago, reducing the, oh, okay, second bullet, reducing contribution to debt service reserve. Is this that famous or infamous graph that has the red line on it that was 3.9?
Correct, correct. And we would have to revisit all of that. We are also not, part of our FY '21 CIP was to put another $500,000 toward Scutcheon Elementary in cash, and that, that's out of this proposal as well. So, so this could very easily impact the planning and the, you know, the year plan for that school.
Yes, I, yes, I, I would agree with that. I mean, at some point, we would need to revisit that graph and the shape of it and-
Correct, correct.
The contributions, because I believe we were contributing for the first few years and then drawing down the next few years, and on average, we were fine, and if we're not contributing, then we can't draw down, and so there'd be-
But so many things, you know, we just are unknown. What will interest rates be? Will it be a good time to borrow?
Sure.
You know, all, all those kinds of things.
Understand, understand, good, thank you. If we can go to the next one? Okay, we talked about budget supplements. Just as an interesting point, going back to the last one again, '09, 2010. I was doing a little bit of research on this, and it turns out that in '09 and in '10, the state budgets that were approved in '09, after they approved the budgets, went back and modified their budgets after they were passed, but before the next budget cycle, 40 out of 50 states did that. 40 out of 50 states in '09, and then 40 out of 50 did it again in '10. So, they, they adopted a budget, passed a budget, and said, geez, our, our outlook was too rosy, we need to go back and revisit it. So, if 40 out of 50 states are doing it, it is not without precedent to go back and revisit your assumptions, especially when things are as uncertain as they are now. So, just put that out there as a bullet point. Couple other questions real quick. I asked the same question about the stub year. All in with these revenue reduction expectations and all in with these cost containment measures, the net-net of all of this is that FY '21 would be a balanced budget?
Correct.
And we are drawing 2.4, I guess, from the reserves?
Right, but those are reserves that are already there.
They're assigned, they're not the unassigned?
They're assigned right now, yes. They're not the unassigned, no.
So, it would reduce our available, which is assigned and unassigned, but it wouldn't reduce our unassigned?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
And then, another question, all in, net-net, is there any personnel reductions in here for county staff?
No, no reduction.
The answer you're looking for is no.
Right now, we, well, well, no, I just want to make sure I say it correctly. What, what we have said is, right now, we have frozen vacancies, so-
Not talking about filling vacancies?
But we haven't reduced them, we, we've frozen vacancies. But, so no, there is no reduction.
If we don't consider the expansion positions that we've now taken back out, and we don't consider vacancies?
Correct.
If we talk about county staff that's employed today, there's no contemplative reductions in here?
Correct.
Is that the right answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the right answer, good. Because we have a absolutely fantastic staff, second to none, and I just would like them to know that we are considering this very carefully, and we're looking at the budget very carefully, but we are not going there. So, just want to let folks know that. Couple of other things real quick. I just want to say, this is a, a very uncertain time, the future is very cloudy, we really don't know, we're walking this road and making it up as we go, and we don't know the depth or the duration of what's in front of us, and there's a high degree of uncertainty. And there's a couple of strategies you could follow. You could say it's, it's too hard to tell and do nothing, you could do a deer in headlights and go, I don't know which way to go, or you can get proactive and get out in front of it. And I think the citizens and the rating agencies are looking to see what we do and how we behave, and I just wanted to thank my colleagues and the county leadership for proactively stepping forward and saying, yeah, it's uncertain, but we're going to deal with it, and we're going to think it through, and we're going to form this revenue committee, and we're going to monitor it monthly, and the finance and audit committee are going to meet quarterly, and we're going to work this problem as we go, but we're not going to ignore it, we're going to get out in front of it. And we're going to make the tough decisions to balance the budget this year and next year, and do what it takes, and yet still provide all the county services to our residents. And it's not a stretch to say, and it's probably restating the obvious, we are right in the middle of a crisis. It's a worldwide pandemic, it's a pending recession and/or depression, depending on how you measure the numbers. And I just wanted to thank our county leadership and our board chair for their steady, firm, and decisive leadership in this time of crisis. With that, I'll get off my soapbox and yield back the rest of my time, thank you.
You can keep going. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, absolutely appreciate that. Still, now, anything else? Anyone else? Okay, so this is not anything we're voting on tonight, and, and thank you, Ms. Horlacker, sincerely, for all the work. The next item on the agenda is appointments, of which there are none. And at this point, I would like us, I know we were supposed to start at 6:00 PM for the public hearing, but I would like us to take about a 10-minute break, so say, a quarter after, and we will come back at that time. Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. We called, called to order the 6:00 PM meeting at 7:15. First item of business is citizen comment period. Ms. Kaywitz, do you have any citizen comments at this point?
Yes, I have one citizen.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, this is Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannickon Road. Kaywitz, please don't start the timer yet, I just wanted to share some information that the live stream- I just wanted to share some information that the live stream links, if you go all the way to the bottom of the county's website under Helpful Links, but if you try and use the link that is in the call up there under the Board of Supervisors page, you keep getting that error message that I shared with Mr. Bedeski a little earlier. So with that kind of housekeeping out of the... So I'm looking at you all, except Mr. Spooner, who's on my far left. But social distancing. If I may, I'd like to iterate what Mr. Lumpkin shared with Ms. Horlacher and Mr. Bedeski, both putting in a lot of work. I see you waving there, Mr. Spooner. That really was a lot of work to come back with a revision. And as a Scots Presbyterian, I will confess, I'm comfortable with a conservative budget projection. But I'm also a bit reluctant to think Amageddon is upon us and that all the things that might happen will happen. And so I'm keeping my comments somewhat general, but I'm still getting my head around that there would be no growth in real estate revenues in the fiscal '21, or even that there would be a decrease in those. I'm not saying that's not the case, but I'm still getting comfortable with that concept. I know it has happened in the past, but I'm not sure that the coronavirus is going to be as long-lasting and as overwhelming as it appears to be, or certainly is for the month of April. I'd also encourage some thought to retaining the staff merit increases. Mr. Peterson, I think, was spot-on when he suggested, or flat-out stated, that the county staff really does a whole lot with very high efficiency and effectiveness. And I think that retaining staff is one of the keys to keeping the county on the pace and the direction that it's going. So I appreciate that belts need to be tightened, but I would encourage the board to give some consideration to being cognizant of the crew that's keeping the ship sailing in the right direction. The level budgeting for schools also gives me some pause. I think that Dr. Rayleigh and the team there at the school is doing some pretty neat things. Level funding is perhaps what needs to happen. But if, again, the opportunity exists to provide them the opportunity to do some of the innovations that they had been looking to implement, that wouldn't be a bad thing at all. Coming back a little bit to my corner of the universe, this is trespassing a little bit on Ms. Horlacher's presentation on the current fiscal year budget, where I saw that departments within the county were being asked to return 5%. I might ask that you include the outside organizations, or at least one of the outside organizations I'm familiar with, with a similar request. I don't think simply because we're not an official part of the county, we shouldn't be asked to review our opportunities to contribute as some of the budget adjustments are being made. And I'm specifically speaking of Monakin Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Yes, so I'm clear on that. I don't see the light blinking, so I'm going to keep on. I'm appreciative, and Ms. Horlacher and Mr. Bedeski were kind to spend an hour or so with me last month on the budget. And so this may be a bit of a stretch, but I would ask the board to consider in the budget increasing budgeting for the Sheriff's Department so far as the personnel and adding a seventh deputy. I appreciate that the comment was made that public safety was not being asked to reduce in fiscal year '21. But as was commented on the ladder truck being an 18-month investment or lead time, adding a deputy is also something that doesn't just happen overnight, not to demean individuals in other job departments, but there is an academy that a new hire needs to go through. There's process and procedure that's involved. And so hiring somebody on the 1st of January, potentially is my understanding, that deputy specifically really wouldn't be available for duty until nine, perhaps longer, months later. So I know it's $140,000 ask, particularly year one, but if that is something that could be explored...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lyle.
And yet, all right. I guess my three minutes are up. I'll... I appreciate, and I'm glad I figured out how the technology works. Thanks so much.
Very good. Glad you joined us. Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Kaywitz?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So thank you. We'll close the citizen comment period and begin the public hearings on fiscal year 2021 budget-related items. We have three of them on the agenda. I believe, Ms. Horlacher, first is the proposed real estate tax rate.
Yes. The first public hearing tonight is to consider the proposed 2020 real estate tax rate. And in your packets, all I've done is reproduce basically the ad that we made earlier. The only difference here is that, you'll note in number four, it talks about increases to the budget. And I will show you a slide later that shows you what those actually are, but those actually with the newly proposed budget are actually decreases. So the proposal, the public hearing, is to keep the tax rate at 53 cents. And as Mr. Peterson mentioned earlier, the adjusted lowered rate necessarily to offset increased assessment would be 50 cents. And if there are any questions on that? If not...
Any questions from Ms. Horlacher at this point? Okay. So we'll open the public hearing on the tax... Real estate tax rate. Ms. Kaywitz, do you have anyone?
No, ma'am.
Not seeing any? Then we will close the public hearing.
Are we closing? We're not closing the public hearing, correct?
Remain open for all three? Okay, that's fine.
It was my intention, it's up to the board, of course, that the budget public hearing on the budget itself...
Is the whole piece?
The budget itself is the one that it says has to close seven days before you vote. And so the comments that staff has made about you being able to keep the public hearing open until April 13th was directed towards that one. You are certainly welcome to do the same with all of these, all of which you'll be voting on on April 21st.
And thank you for that correction. So, yes, it is the intent of the Board of Supervisors to leave the budget public hearings open to public comment through Monday, April 13th, at 5:00 PM. To allow folks who could not get on the call tonight, for whatever reason, were not able to comment, we'd like to have your comments on all parts of our budget. So that will remain open. I apologize for that. Okay. So where are we? Let's see. So the next item, Ms. Horlacher?
The second public hearing tonight is on the FY21 proposed total county budget, amendments to the FY21 proposed budget, 25-year capital improvement program, and the proposed FY20 tax rates. So we usually start out showing you the proposed budget. And we started out in February proposing a budget of $92.2 million. That's our entire county budget, including utilities, schools, and all the other funds. And that was balanced with $92.2 million in revenues. So tonight, the amendments to the FY20 were presented earlier. We will discuss them tonight. And then, on the 21st, should you decide, we will incorporate those into the adopted final budget. So the overall total amendment is that we would be decreasing general fund revenues by $4.485 million. And we would balance that by decreasing general fund expenditures by $4.485 million. Revenues, I just discussed a little while ago. Basically, our largest revenues decreasing would be our real estate tax, personal property, building permits, sales tax, and interest. Again, just to show you, compared to what was originally proposed back in February, we're proposing a $4.5 million decrease, 7.5% decrease. Expenditures, we also talked about earlier. Adjustments to equal that 4.4 adjustment include reducing all operating budgets by 5%, freezing all new positions, maintaining contracted support services, maintaining school funding at FY20 levels, taking out the merit increases, benchmarking, reducing the contribution to the debt service from $2 million to... Oop, that should say $0.9 million. And then reducing the Pago contribution from 840 to nothing. And so this is a... It shows all the budgets compared to proposed. So compared to proposed, this is how we would decrease that shortfall by 4.485. You see that debt service has a big decrease. That's because of that contribution to debt service reserve that we would not make. And then the other big decreases are to public safety and to schools as well. The only other amendment to the budget, a very small one, we went... Ms. Kimberly Jefferson and I went back and looked at her social services budget. And it's a... We balanced things a little differently. And she looked at things a little differently, knowing that she wasn't going to have an increase in healthcare costs. And we were... We just decreased her total budget by 29, almost $30,000. It has no effect on her services or programs. It's just a decrease in her budget because of some costs that she got more information on that weren't going to increase. Then the budget amendments. So I showed you earlier that there's no longer an increase. So that statement number four that was in the advertisement would say the general fund budget of the county of Goochlam will be 1.5% less than last year's budget, and the total budget will be 2.4% less. So big picture, all the changes. The utilities budget would not change at all. The Office of Children's Services would not change. Those are mandated services. The schools will be back to us with more of how they would adjust. But they said, you know, we already told them about the 950. And as they told you earlier, they're going to their board next week to talk more about any other adjustments that they will be making to their overall budget. And we mentioned earlier the capital improvement program. We started out with a $5.8 million. And again, amendments would be a 3.1 decrease in projects and a decrease in revenues to support those projects. The original... The remaining projects would be the ladder truck, the Randolph Elementary parking project, and facility site improvement. Partial projects would be IT replacement, sheriff, and county vehicles. We also... Part of this public hearing is to show you all the other tax rates and rates that we have. None of these have changed from last year. Everything on here remains the same as last year. Is there any questions on that?
On board, any questions? Ms. Horlacher? Not at this point? Okay. So we'll open the public hearing on item two, proposed 2021 county budget amendments. Ms. Kaywitz? Do you have any?
No, ma'am. I have no comments.
Okay. So again, we're not closing the public hearing. We'll leave that open again until Monday, April 13th, at 5:00 PM. If anyone would like to comment. Okay. The third item, Ms. Horlacher, fee schedules.
Okay. The third public hearing tonight is on ordinances to amend the county fee schedule. One thing I didn't mention in my earlier presentation is our original fee schedule changes included increasing water and utility usage rates by 5% and 6%. They also included some building inspection fees that we were going to add. And we decided that to propose and said to you that this is not the year to do those kinds of things. So the... And talking to utilities, they felt that they could keep their rates flat for this year. So there would be... We're not proposing any increase in utility rates. What it means to them, the fund, is that they won't necessarily be able to build up their R&amp;R fund this year the way that they would plan to do. It just means they skip a year in terms of building up those funds. So the only two fee changes we are left with are to reduce the fee for plat vacation to $150. And we're doing this to agree with the... Put us in compliance with the state code, basically. And to increase the utility permit application inspection fees from 3% to 4%. And this is not a consumer cost. This is a developer cost. And we're just trying to recoup our costs there, because we then pay consultants to go out and check on the work that they are doing. So that is to recoup our costs. So the only two fee changes proposed are the plat vacation and the utility inspection fees. Any questions on that?
Again, Ms. Horlacher, thank you. Questions? On the board? All right. Seeing none, open the public hearing on this item. Ms. Kaywitz, any?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manniken Road. And I would just make one comment that was made, that an increase in a fee would not be a consumer cost. In my world, it is always a consumer cost, because that's who ultimately pays. When there is an increase at the wholesale, typically margins are maintained, and those costs get built into what the consumer ultimately pays. I don't know that I have a concern that it going from 3% to 4%, but it is a consumer cost eventually. It just may not show up as an exact line item, but it's going to be there. And those are my public comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Appreciate that. Okay. Any others?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Again, still open until April 13th at 5:00 PM. The next public hearing is a District 4 zoning case, Grace Chinese Baptist Church. They have been contacted and voluntary deferred the public hearing until the board's June 2nd, 2020, meeting. But I do need a motion to defer this case. Well, public hearing.
Madam Chair, I would move that we...
Wait a minute. Public hearing. This is a public hearing, right? So, yeah.
The board regularly does not hold a public hearing on its deferrals.
Okay, good.
You certainly are entitled to.
See, I was right at the beginning.
But your practice has been that you don't usually.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Ready for motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we accept the deferral until June for the application by the Chinese Baptist Church.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Second?
Second.
Okay. So you have a motion, a second? Any comments, questions? You ready to vote? This does not need to be a roll call, right? No? Okay. Do both of them in a block?
Doesn't need to be a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Hearing none passes unanimously. Same situation exists with application by Oropax Hunting Preserve. Again, voluntary deferred to the public hearing to June 2020. Again, voluntary deferred to the, the public hearing to June 2nd, 2020. Also need a motion to defer.
Madam Chair, I move that we defer the application for Oropax Hunting Preserve till the June meeting.
Thank you. Spooner, second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. So those two cases are deferred. So now we will adjourn. Board of Supervisors will adjourn to Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 at 2:00 PM for adoption of the county and schools budget capital improvement plan, utility rates and tax rates in the board, board meeting room at two, uh, room 250. Tuesday, May 5th, at 1:00 PM is Audit and Finance Committee meeting, Board of Supervisors in room 250. And a regular meeting on Tuesday, May 5th, 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So hearing no other business from the board. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.